Would you all take a seat, please? I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. I believe there's a quorum present. We need 30. We have more than 30. I'm going to go over a few things before we actually start. There might be people waiting, but I'd like to let you know who the tellers are in case we have to have a ballot or a head count. I'm hoping we don't, but if we do, we have Don Burnham, Vicky Cataldo, Wendy Fossa, Susan Luftkin, Caroline Knowlton, Kathy McKinnon, Terry Mansfield, and Tim Sanford. Those are our tellers.
Actually, it's Sue Luftkin as well. It's Mary Mansfield.
Oh, sorry. Instead of Sue Luftkin, we have Mary Mansfield. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could stay standing for a second. I don't want to get up and down. I just want to recognize we've had four individuals that passed that served the town in the past year. We had Harold Addison. We had Mrs. Athens. I can call her Mrs. Athens because she was my fifth grade teacher. I'm not going to use her first name. Ralph Doucette, who was a fireman, and Suzanne Brand also worked for the school as the nurse. And Harold was a selectman for a few years way back. So if we could have a moment of silence for those four. Thank you. Now, before you sit, if you could, you know, say hi to your neighbor. Shake your hands with your neighbor. Say hi. Yeah, I've always done it. Just kind of, okay, you might not agree, but just say hi. Okay, could I have your attention again? I know you're all excited about the sun being out. It's really nice out there. That's great. It's that big orange ball in the sky we saw today. If we have to have a secret ballot, everyone got a blue card. If that happens, you're going to go to a station. You're going to get your card checked and pick up a ballot if we have to do that. I'll go into more details if we have to do that, but I don't think, I'm hoping we're not going to have to. I'd also like to, there's a couple individuals that are not running for office again this year. We had Raymond Green, who was a constable, decided not to run. And you all know, some of you may know, but Lisa O'Donnell is not running again. I've had the opportunity to work with Lisa for quite a few years as a selectman. She will be missed. She brings a lot to the table, a lot of new ideas. And so if we can have a round of applause for Lisa's service. Any non-residents are over in that section, so if you are not a registered voter, I believe you should be sitting in those seats. If there's anyone in here that should be over there, if you could go sit over there. That would be great. I'll take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant.
A no.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Perfect. Quick question to the Finance Committee. Does the Finance Committee support all or any of the monetary articles?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. With no further ado, I'd like to move on to Article One.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a surveyor of bark and lumber.
Is there a second?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Two. Mr. Spinney.
Aye. Andrew Spinney. Move that the town receive the reports of the town officials, boards, and committees contained in the annual town report.
Is there a second?
Discussion.
Any discussion from the floor? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article number three. Mr. Pippin.
Aye. Peter Pippin. Move that the town vote to approve wage and salary scale for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the recommendation of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. That's a no. Discussion. You get the next one. So all those in favor of Article Three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Article Four.
Aye. Peter Pippin. Move that the town fix the salary and compensation of each of the elected officers of the town as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
I...
Article Five.
Just trying to keep...
Jump right in.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Septic Betterment Fund the sum of $38,684 for the purpose of making necessary payments to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust during fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the terms of repayment for the Community Septic Management Program Loan Funds.
Is there a second?
No.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that a no? Or a no? Was there a no? No. Unanimous. Article Six.
Aye. Andrew Spinney. Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,129 to appropriate from the Sewer Department receipts the sum of $1,939 and to appropriate from the Water Department receipts the sum of $4,091 for a total appropriation of $16,159 to fund and implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2905.
Is there a second?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Article...
Six.
Six, I'm sorry. Article Seven.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,142 to fund and implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Police Benevolent Association of Essex, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, International Union of Police Associations, AFL-CIO.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article Seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Eight.
Aye. Benjamin Buttrick. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $8,51,906 as follows: A. Raise by taxation the sum of $1,557,638 for debt repayment, principal and interest; B. Transfer from the Cemetery Sale of Lots Fund the sum of $3,600 to the cemetery budget; C. Transfer from the Cemetery Lot Care Fund the sum of $7,338 to the cemetery budget; D. Transfer from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund the sum of $1,206 to the cemetery budget; E. Transfer from the Town Technology Fund the sum of $12,150 to the Town IT Budget; F. Transfer from the Ambulance Fund the sum of $50,000 to the ambulance budget; G. Transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 to the health insurance budget; H. Transfer from the Street Lighting Fund the sum of $3,000 to the street lighting maintenance and repair budget; and I. To raise by taxation the sum of $6,216,974 to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the town according to the remaining budget items as indicated in the Finance Committee Report. And to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within a department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is basically the operating expenses of the town. So it comes from different sources, so there's a certain amount of shifting and primarily raised by taxation.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article Eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay. Passes. Article Nine.
Aye. Scott Dewitt. Move that Article Nine be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor postponing Article Nine?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Article Ten.
Aye. Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,141,784 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund budget as follows: A. Debt repayment, principal and interest the sum of $915,132 from sewer betterments and the sum of $328,911 to be raised by taxation; and B. Funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the Sewer Department: $897,741 from departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee Report. And to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers from the Sewer Department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article Ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article Eleven.
Aye. Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to transfer from the Water Enterprise free cash the sum of $13,000 to replenish the Water Department's maintenance budget line item for the remainder of fiscal year 2019.
Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article Twelve.
Aye. Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $781,922 for the Water Enterprise Fund budget as follows: A. Debt repayment, principal and interest the sum of $13,718 from water betterments and the sum of $31,970 from departmental receipts; and B. Funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the Water Department: $736,234 from departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee Report. And to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the Water Department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. You want to go? So this is the school article that's coming up, and we usually like to have Pam, the superintendent, and Ari, the business planning...
Um...
And they're at another meeting in Manchester. They won't be here till about eight o'clock. So would you like to...
I'm going to have to...
So I need to, someone will need to make a motion to move Article Thirteen, yeah, So there's a, there's a motion to move Article Thirteen to after Article Fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. So we will address now Article Fourteen.
Aye. Christopher Grant. Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $282,795 to pay the town's share of the operating and capital costs of the North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019.
Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Fifteen.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to transfer from the Sale of Real Estate Fund the sum of $497,105 for the costs of a project manager and a project designer to continue the design and to prepare and oversee preparation of plans and specifications sufficient for permitting and competitive bidding for a new public safety facility at the site consisting of 11 John Wise Avenue, MAP 128 Lot 90, and a portion of Zero Spring Street, MAP 128 Lot 102, that abuts John Wise Avenue or anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second?
No.
Discussion?
Discussion. All right. I want to give a little bit of background about how this article has morphed in the past week. And then I would also like to, at the end of that, ask Town Meeting for leave to have the project architect and owner's project manager, who are here this evening, provide an overview of the project where it stands right now. Background is that a year ago, we stood before you and asked to purchase the lot where the Village Restaurant sits. That ultimately failed with 63% instead of a two-thirds majority. And one of the criticisms that we heard after that is that we weren't bringing professional design advice to that. And we were in a catch-22 there because we had no time to ask Town Meeting for a designer. And it was a confidentiality agreement with the owner who had approached the town for the sale. So that said, we understood that the voters wanted to see numbers from a professional about public safety, not from what we had prepared, taken past Town Building Committee reports. So last August, we had a special town meeting and asked Town Meeting to fund owner's project manager, which we did. And the owner's project manager worked with us, and we selected an architect. And last October, we asked Town Meeting to fund the architect for the project, and Town Meeting did. Between October and February, we worked with the architect to do what essentially was a site selection process, where we looked at parcels of land that the town owned, but we also looked at within a radius acceptable to the Fire Department area properties that would house a, one or the other, or preferably both. We were also instructed at that time by the architects that finding a flat level lot where we could build a single-story building for both departments would be the best bet. So because that was the most economical route, we went, we pursued that. We looked at every possible piece of property in town in the right areas with the right access and the right sort of site conditions that would support this. We asked owners if they would be willing to sell. We had no takers on that. So in February of this year, we came before another special town meeting and asked the voters to approve the transfer of the lot on John Wise Avenue that is contiguous with the cemetery, to approve the transfer of that from the Board of Public Works to the Board of Selectmen exclusively for the purposes of public safety. That was approved, as was the purchase of the adjacent residential property at 11 John Wise Avenue to essentially make that, that site 50% larger. So that's where we are. Because the site selection process sort of took us off our timeline a little bit, we had hoped by spring town meeting here, annual town meeting, to be able to come before you with a design that was about 60%. Right now, we're at a design that's about 30%. The preliminary estimate was done. I'm sure most people have heard the sort of sticker shock number of 17.5 million. That number includes about $2 million worth of contingencies because there's just, the design hasn't, the designers haven't had the opportunity, the time to work it out to, to greater detail. So rather than present and ask for a 17.5 as a very large and rough number at this point, we have deferred that, and we're asking tonight just to continue the funding of the owner's project manager and the architects and their consultants to get us through construction, finish design development, and prepare construction documents and get us through bidding. So that's what the cost proposed in the article is for this evening. So that's where we are. So I'm going to ask now for leave of the meeting to have the owner's project manager, Tim Dorman, and Johnson Roberts Associates. We have Stuart Roberts here, though, the architect. He's the lead architect, give you some background about the project so that you know where we're headed. I think it's also important to point out that in the design development process, which usually happens after the first estimate where we were a week and a half ago, that's when, after you get that sort of first pass number, is, is when you start to look at where you can tighten things up. Board of Selectmen this evening authorized them to meet with both departments to see where we can tighten things up, what they can live without in their spaces. They've already done a first pass. It's sort of tightening up some of the areas, and they have shaved 2,200 feet so far off the, the building design, and we're not done yet. So this is a process that we're going to go through to try and economize based on the first estimate, so that when we come before town, a future town meeting to ask for funding for construction, we have a much harder number and a finalized design. So that's where we are. We'll take any questions about that, but I would also like to ask for leave of the meeting for the presentation.
Right. Before we get into discussion on the article, if I could take a vote, a leave of the meeting so I can have these gentlemen do their presentation. They're not, they're not voters, so we have to get leave of the meeting for them to speak, so... Want to make a motion to...
What's that?
Motion to take the leave?
I'll make a motion for, to take leave of the meeting to have the owner's project manager and architect speak this evening.
Is there a second?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You've got to sit. Do you want to bring your microphone back? Try to take it off before I can get my, to do that for us. Okay. Great, thank you. I'm Stu Roberts from Johnson Roberts Associates. As Lisa said, we've been working for the past several months going through a site selection process and a schematic design. And we're now in a, what's called a design development phase. Other phases to come, there'll be construction documents after that, and then bidding, and then a construction phase for the building itself. So I'm going to walk you through kind of quickly where we've been to take you through the schematic design phase. I know a number of you have been to the public forums. We've had several public forums during both the site selection phase and the schematic design phase. And there will certainly be more public forums during the design development phase. So if you have opinions about the design, we encourage you to come to the forums and be heard. We are trying to take the comments that we get into consideration, and because we're really trying to look at, at everything. Where we are now, we've been through the schematic phase, and what that really does is it does kind of what it sounds like. We have a scheme, a basic overall kind of concept for how we would approach the public facilities building. The phase that we're in now is design development, and that's really kind of what it sounds like. We're really developing all the technical aspects of the design. So as we get into the technical aspects, we can delve deeper into looking at options for cost savings and trade-offs. So for instance, we're looking at options for mechanical systems to try to determine what's going to be the most cost-effective mechanical system, both in terms of operating costs and first costs. So those are the kinds of things we're working on in the current phase that we're in. Sorry for technical difficulties. I'll start in here. We basically, we started the program looking at the space needs of both the Police Department and the Fire Department. And I won't go into this in a lot of detail, but this is a program diagram for the Police Department, and it really has their kind of three zones. There's one zone over here on the, on the far right, that's really the kind of the secured part of the station. So that has the two cells, a Sally Port booking rooms. The, what's on the left-hand side is the public part of the station. So there's a training room, there's a conference room, there's a lobby. And the middle is the, really what I call sort of the business parts of the station, the offices, the locker rooms and such. The public, one of the advantages is doing a combined facility, is that we can share all of those public facilities. So the training room, there's a physical training room, and we can combine all of that and only build one, which is different than if we had two separate stations on, on two different sites. This is the diagram for the fire station. And this is, you can see there are different colors on this one. There's a red, there's a gray, and there's, that should be a green, although it looks kind of yellow. The issue here is we're trying to design a healthy fire station. It's, it's been found that firefighters have incidents of cancer that are many times the national average. That's because they go out to events, they get exposed to toxins. Those get on their equipment, on their, their persons, they come back to the station. And for many, many years, there was no kind of separation between the corridors and the, and the apparatus bays. And so the whole fire station was just, there were, there were toxins and contaminants all over the station. So current design trend is to try to do healthy stations to mitigate the spread of toxins and to do a station that's as healthy as we possibly can. We want to keep both the firefighters who work there healthy, and we want to keep the public who comes to the station away from contaminants. So what we've done, basically, the, all the red zone, that's would be the apparatus that's going out to respond. The spaces around the outside here, those are kind of support spaces. But the things we're adding, we're adding decontamination spaces so that when somebody comes back from an event, there's a way to get cleaned off before they would go into the corridors of the station. There's a gray zone, which is kind of the transition zone, and then the green zone is the, really the corridors. So that's the offices. We have some bunk rooms. The idea here would be, we're trying to keep all those contaminants out of the green zone. We have some mechanical systems that would be pressurized, so that has the highest pressure in the green zone, so that contaminants can't flow from the apparatus bay into the neutral zone, and they can't go from the neutral zone into the green zone. We're trying to keep the clean parts of the station clean, including the public areas, which would include the training room in the front, because we want to keep it healthy for both firefighters and the public. So we took, we took the program spaces that we had, and we then took a look at every site we could possibly think of in town. we could possibly think of in town. We really, I don't, I can't even tell you how many we looked at, but we looked at layouts on a whole bunch of sites all over town. Really in the end, there was really only one viable site and that's the site that we're currently looking at, which is the cemetery plot on 11 John Wise Ave. Just looking at the site plan, the, the station is set up so that with the purchase of 11 John Wise Ave, we're able to do a station that would allow trucks to pull directly in off of John Wise Ave and then back into the station. If we didn't have 11 John Wise Ave, we'd have to rotate those fire bays around 90 degrees. They'd be coming right out onto John Wise Ave and would be much more difficult for, to back the trucks in and it would have a bigger impact on the traffic. So by having 11 John Wise Ave, it really means that we have the ability to have a much safer situation for everybody. There will be some signalization on John Wise Ave probably, so in the event of a fire, when trucks pull out, there'll be some red lights that would stop traffic in either direction. The site itself, I think probably many of you are familiar with it. There's a fair amount of grade change from the front to the back. There's about 17 feet of drop. So we've tried, that's a challenge, but we've also tried to turn it into a positive. So we have a station where we've, we have the fire department at the upper level. We let the site drop off to the back and then we have a police station that sits underneath the fire station at the back, but it has a complete set of windows and walls and everything to look out towards the cemetery. So we're really trying to use that slope as effectively as we can. The plan is set up, we have some different parking areas. There's a little bit of parking over on the fire apron. There's a public lot, which is over here kind of at the lower left-hand side. That would lead directly into a public entrance that's up in here. This is the public zone that you'd come into. The site would pitch down around to the back, so there's some lower parking. Right now, we have a second entrance that might come into the police at the lower level and then there's the Sally Port that you'll see in a moment that comes in the back. So just looking at the current plan, and this plan is going to evolve. As I said, we've, we've had a number of public forums, we're taking input and we've just been looking at ways that we might be able to reduce the size of the building a little bit. But this was what we had at the end of schematic design. You basically, we see one side that has all of the apparatus. This is the apparatus that you currently have. It's, we haven't oversized the apparatus bay. These are all the support facilities for the apparatus bay, including bunker gear storage and cleaning. There's some of the personal decon rooms. You'd come through two neutral corridors and this is the green part of the station. So that has locker rooms and changing rooms. One of the things we've done here to economize on space is we have set up a situation where we have locker rooms and then we have individual changing rooms. And that's so that we can accommodate female firefighters without having to do separate men's locker rooms and women's locker rooms. So we're able to do this much more efficiently and it gives flexibility should at some point the station, your department be 50% female firefighters. It gives you that flexibility. There's a day room. We have some bunk rooms in the back. This would be the public entrance that comes in on this side and this is the public zone in the front. So we have a training room that's set up here, which could be used by both police and fire. This is, will be outfitted so that it could be an emergency operations center. So in the event of a hurricane or a major snowstorm or some other kind of disaster, this would be kind of the central place where all of the emergency services could coordinate their efforts. Downstairs, the grade is dropping off, so we have really, the building is in the back where we have access to grade. So you would be able to come in to a lower lobby and that public zone has access to a conference room and would also provide, there's access to a physical training room that's intended for the police and fire to share. So we have one instead of two. We have a harbor master's office and you come into the, really this is the business part of the police station. If you're coming in on the wrong side of the law, you're going to come back in here and come in the Sally Port into the booking area. There's a search area, there's some, a couple of cells back in here, but this is kind of the more secured part of the station in the back. So that's, that's the basic plan. This is going to evolve a little bit as we develop the design. Couple of the things we're looking to do, at 11 John Wise Ave, we have a historic barn and there's been interest expressed in seeing if we might be able to reuse part of that barn. The barn turns out to be just about the right size and dimensions for what we were planning for the training room. So the plan we currently have is to take the barn and take the barn structure, if anybody's been in there. It's a beautiful old timber frame barn. So we're going to take the timber, we're going to take some of the interior cladding and we're going to reuse that inside the training room of the new facility. So this is just a picture of the barn. And there's kind of a little computer diagram that kind of shows kind of what this barn frame would be like on the inside and kind of what the training room would be like. Trying to keep that little piece of Essex heritage. Couple of the views of what it might look like. We tried to take the scale of the building and break it down into a series of smaller buildings. So we're trying to make it look kind of like a collection of agriculture buildings. We're really looking, we were trying to do something that would, would fit in with the neighborhood, be as close to the scale of the existing buildings as we could possibly make it. So this would be the entrance coming in on the upper level, so that would take you in. That's the, that's the barn that's been put inside here. So that's the training room. If you go around to the other end, you can see the, there's the apparatus bays, four bays. So that's the apparatus bay part of the station. So we come around on John Wise Ave a little bit, get a little better view of the front. There's the, the day room and the kitchen would be in there. That's the, that's the training room. That's basically the fire station. And then when we come around to the backside of the station, again, we broke it down into a number of smaller buildings. This would be the entrance that would come into the lower level. So this is all police station down here. That'd be the Sally Port coming in right back there on the backside. So I'm going to turn this over to Tim. He's going to just talk about what we're looking for in terms of funding to move forward through the bid phase.
Thank you. I'm Tim Dorman with NV5. We're the OPM on the project. Lisa gave a good background on what we've done since we got involved in the project in September. So I'm going to really focus on moving forward, what's to come. And one of the things is, is the funding that's being requested tonight. So we wanted to provide you with a little more detail on the basis for that, that number. Really what that's intended to get us to is the point at which we can bid the project and be ready to award to a contractor. That would cover all of the design fees, specialty consultants, environmental permitting, printing of plans, advertising and other administrative costs. So that's sort of just the design bid phase budget. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about how that fits in with the schedule in the next phases. So this is just a summary schedule that essentially breaks down each of the major design phases to get us to construction. Right now, we've moved into the green bar, which is design development. Design development is essentially the, the sort of schematic level design starts to get further detailed. So that's happening now through early July. So we continue through the summer into the construction documents phase, which is even further detail. And that's starting to get the, the package ready to issue for bid. And that would be essentially through the purple bar. And so early fall, we'd be looking to bid the project. And the goal there that we're really working against is starting construction as early as we can in advance of winter so that we can get some of the site work done and start getting foundations in the ground. So that's sort of our push. You know, obviously, we don't want to end up in a situation where we start to lose months there. You don't necessarily want to be starting work in the middle of winter, so. But that's our goal now.
So I think that concludes the presentation part. Is that correct?
That's the conclusion of that presentation and both of these gentlemen will be available for questions and answers when we open the floor for discussion.
Like before I start, the Bruins, it's tied 0-0 after the first period in case you're curious.
That's what?
The Bruins, it's 0-0 after the first period.
Thank you.
So, the who? The what? So Lisa now has, before we get on to the discussion, I think where we've taken the original article and eliminated the, the funding for the building itself and pared it down just to the design costs, I think we need to have a little explanation of that process going forward. Is that correct?
For the, for the ballot, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to ask for leave of the meeting to allow Greg Crowe to Town Council to explain the technicalities of the debt exclusion language that's on the ballot for next Monday's election.
So it's a motion. I need a second to that. All those in favor of allowing Greg to speak about that? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Greg?
Through you Mr. Moderator. Good evening. So I'm going to attempt to explain the, the sort of the procedural mechanism for funding this project going forward. And unfortunately, I don't have any pictures to show or anything like that. And I'll warn you now, this is probably one of the most difficult concepts of municipal finance to understand. So I will do my best to, to explain it, but certainly if there are questions, I will remain here. So we started off preparing for this annual town meeting with, with the warrant. And what the warrant generally does is to provide you with notice of the general subject matter that's going to be discussed at the meeting. So with respect to this particular project, at the time that the warrant was prepared, the selectmen anticipated that they would be asking you to vote to approve a borrowing for the entire sum of the project, including design and construction. And to have that borrowing be contingent upon a debt exclusion under what's known as Proposition 2 and 1/2. Now, as we got closer to the time of the town meeting, the selectmen found that they weren't close enough in terms of what the final construction cost was going to be to ask you to vote on a number. They felt that, that any number brought to town meeting now would be premature until the design went further along. So what was ultimately decided was that at this meeting tonight, you'd only be asked to fund out of available funds from the sale of real estate account, the amount of money necessary to complete the rest of the design. And then they would come back at a future town meeting, a special meeting in the early fall, to ask you to authorize the borrowing for construction. Now, that's so, that's part one of the process where town meeting has to vote to appropriate the money, either out of existing funds or out of a borrowing. And just like you might borrow to buy a car or a house, you, the money borrowed is paid back over time with interest. So in order to fund those interest payments on an annual basis, probably for somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 years, the town has to appropriate funding for that each year. Well, there's another concept that we, we butt up against, which is called Proposition 2 and 1/2. And Proposition 2 and 1/2 limits the amount of money that the town can raise by taxation each year to 2 and 1/2% above what was raised in the previous year. That's known as the levy limit. But there are provisions in Proposition 2 and 1/2 that allow the town to raise revenue in excess of what would otherwise be allowed under Proposition 2 and 1/2. And one of those ways is called a debt exclusion. And what a debt exclusion does is it allows the town to temporarily increase taxes to pay back the principal and interest associated with a borrowing. So if you think of your, your levy limit being here, if you approve a debt exclusion, it temporarily raises it to here until the debt is paid off, then it comes back down to the level it was at before. Okay? So there are two parts to this process. The first part is for town meeting to authorize the debt, to authorize the borrowing of the money. The second part is for the voters at an election to authorize the debt exclusion. Now, in order for, for there to be a debt exclusion, the board of selectmen have to vote to put a question on the ballot. The question, the form of the question is established by state law. They don't have the ability to change the form of the question whatsoever. And you'll notice that that question, which is in the warrant that you have here, doesn't have an amount of money. It never does because you don't know what the amount of the exclusion is until the debt fully matures because the debt consists of both principal and interest. Okay? So what we have here are two parts. The selectmen anticipate that they're going to have to borrow funds to complete the project and that they're not going to be able to pay back the principal and interest within the levy limit, so they're asking for a debt exclusion. Now, the way, the mechanics of how it works are town meeting vote to appropriate or borrow the funds, town election to authorize the exclusion. Now, they don't have to happen in any particular order. So in this case, because you're not being asked to authorize the debt here tonight, the question does remain on the ballot. Once it's there, it can't be taken off, it has to go to the voters. But it's not a moot point at this point because the voters at the election can vote to authorize the debt exclusion. And what they're saying is, if you borrow money for purposes of this project, we authorize it to be paid back outside of the levy limit. But at a future town meeting, town meeting is going to have to vote by a 2/3s vote to actually authorize the debt. And at that point, you'll know what the amount of the principal is because town meeting will have to vote to authorize that again by a 2/3s vote. And what the Department of Revenue says is that if you vote at the election first, the town meeting vote has to occur within a reasonable period of time after that. Now, what you'll hear later on is that there is a real time constraint here to get this done, to get shovels in the ground by the fall. But if for some reason, the, the project was not approved at a, at a fall town meeting, you would have approximately a year to get town meeting to authorize the debt before you'd have to go back and take a new election vote to authorize the debt exclusion. So again, I know that this is all very confusing, but you know, when you go to the polls next week, you know, what you should be thinking about is, at some point in time, town meeting might authorize the, a borrowing for completion of this public safety facility. Do I support paying that back outside of the levy limit? And if the answer to that is yes, then you'll come back here in the fall and you'll get to vote on what the amount of that exclusion is by a 2/3s vote. And, and just as a sort of final recap, but not to confuse everything, all you're voting tonight is to use sale of real estate funds for the continued design. And, and that just requires a majority vote of this meeting.
Thank you, Greg. So back to the main motion, which is Article 15, discussion on Article 15. So if you want to talk, get to a microphone, stand in line, I think there's a couple back there. So if you want to speak to the article, please get to a microphone and we'll try and get you in order.
Jeff, can I say a few comments?
Sure.
Great.
Just your name?
Yep, thank you. My name is Ben Butrick, Benjamin Butrick, and I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of perspective on this to some of the technical description that Greg was using to describe this. And basically, what I wanted to say is that the vote at the ballot next week is not moot because regardless of what the public safety building is going to cost, we're going to need to have a debt exclusion. Because right now, we are fully at our tax levy. We have no room right now in our budget to take on any debt. So if you are conceptually in favor of the public safety building, then you should vote yes. vote yes next week. You will have a recourse if you disagree with the cost, and there'll be lots of debate around that, you will have recourse. And so this is not a vote next week that basically locks you in to a blank check. And I just want to make that clear. The other point that I wanted to make is that, just speaking to the aspect of time, the reason why next week's vote is important is that if this vote doesn't pass, then we have an issue of pushing this farther down the road. And we have a cost issue there, just in terms of construction costs, and where we are in the construction cycle. And also, and this is of particular interest to the Finance Committee, what we're worried about is the borrowing cost. Because when you look at the interest rate, and you capitalize that over the full borrowing period, there's a multiplier effect in terms of the cost of this building. So, at least to keep the process moving forward, it's important to still consider the ballot next week, and to think carefully about if you're in favor of the public safety building. So, and I'll ask if anybody wants to make any other comments.
So, we're on the main motion, the main motion, which is just the design cost. So, I'm going to go to the back of the room, because he was up to the mic next.
Hi, Mark King, LaBarren Road. I do have slides if you want me to do it, because I have numbers. But why don't I start without them and see if we, see how far we get. I'm in favor of a healthy fire station. I think that's absolutely needed. What I'm not in favor of is a combined facility we can't afford as a small town. Seventeen and a half million dollars, let's work with that number now, it may go up a little bit, or a lot, it may go down a little bit. If you divide seventeen and a half million dollars by thirty-five hundred residents here in Essex, five thousand dollars for every man, child, and woman. If you have three people in your family, it's fifteen thousand. If you have four, it's twenty thousand. That's an amount of money per resident that's, according to Stuart Roberts' analysis of other fire stations, is just unprecedented. The typical town builds a fire station for about three hundred to five hundred, once as much as a thousand per resident. And part of it's a function of, we are a very, very small town, but we clearly have very, very limited financial resources. So, what do we do? Two towns, in Mr. Roberts' analysis, have done something that might give us some ideas. Groton and Westwood. You know where, you probably know where Groton is, it's outside of 495. Westwood is the suburb that's immediately outside of Denham, on the other side of 128. They built fire stations, again, fire station only here. Eighteen thousand five hundred feet for the Groton facility. By the way, we're currently proposing for Essex fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet for the upper story of the combined building. Westwood's was a little smaller, it's twelve thousand square feet, but we're either roughly three thousand feet more, or if I look at it, another three thousand, actually all closer to four thousand smaller. But nevertheless, both of them built it for eight million dollars, according to Mr. Roberts. And so I'm taking his numbers at face value. So that's where we start. We start with a single facility, eight million dollars, maybe we allow nine million for some flexibility in design. But, so what I'm going to be talking about is putting some restrictions on this planning money, to only design a single facility with a not-to-exceed number. We'll get to that, get to that in a minute. But I'd like to suggest some other ideas to how we might keep that number down, given that, although, everything, by the way, I'm talking about is in Mr. Roberts', twenty, twenty-one dollars. So we've taken the timing differences. These facilities were built recently. First, why do we need a training room? We were, I was in the third floor of Town Hall, looks like a great training room. Why build another one?
Please let him, let him finish.
Two, do we really need four bays at the new station? Why can't the ambulances remain at the current Martin Street facility? That's where the police are going to be. Why are there forty-eight parking spaces at this new facility? Can you imagine how, did you see how much asphalt is going to get poured around that building? By the way, there are wetlands just downhill from that, from that facility. And why can't we block Route 133 traffic? Boston does it every day on Boylston Street, at the corner of Boylston and Hereford. You might have seen that fire station at the, in the marathon. They block traffic all the time. It happens, and it's only for a few minutes. If you push the building closer to John Wise, maybe you can get rid of a lot of the asphalt. Also, if we only build a fire station, why can't we make the equipment bays a pre-manufactured, prefabricated building? That's exactly what Hamilton did when they built their new building. And further, I understand that a major cost component is the air handling system. You've got to keep the toxins out of the locker rooms and the office area of the fire station. Why not build either two buildings with a breezeway connecting them?
Thirty seconds.
Okay? I'm almost there.
Okay.
And why, and with a breezeway or with an airlock, and forget about trying to re-engineer the entire air conditioning system. The average homeowner in this town pays ninety-three hundred dollars in taxes, you're talking about a five hundred to seven hundred dollar increase. You're getting very close to ten thousand and not being able to deduct it. I'll leave my argument there. I have somebody else that can help with the amendment that we're proposing.
Thank you. Back there, gentleman?
Yes, I'm William Bruce at 51 Pond.
Could you say it a little louder?
William Bruce at 51 Pond Street.
Thank you.
I agree with everything he just said. One of the things that the gentleman who just spoke said, we are now at a cap at our budget, and we're going to need to ask for more money regardless of a new fire station. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's going to mean our taxes are going to go up again. I have to agree that the kind of money that we're talking about spending just seems unnecessary for a town this size. And I would say that this is now creeping on the start of locking us in to a new fire station. It's a, first we start, we spend five hundred thousand dollars for design, and we're buying a location. They're putting us into a no-return situation. Pretty soon, they're going to say, well, we've spent, you know, a million and a half dollars on this project, how can we stop now? My feeling is, it's a good time to stop the projects overdesigned, in my opinion. And I have all the respect for the police and fire, but it's got to be affordable. And to me, this project is not affordable. It's not economic in its approach. If we really needed something this big, then why not build something smaller with the idea that you could expand it later? And then decide then if we need it. But, I would right now say that the time to stop this is now, and I'd vote no. Thank you.
Over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Guy Bradford, I live at 22 Main Street, and I'm also on the Finance Committee. And I want to reiterate some of the, and emphasize some of the things that Ben Buttrick said just a little while ago, notwithstanding the question of the cost, the final cost of the project. To me, and to looking at this from a financing perspective, I cannot say strongly enough how much. Timing is of the essence. If we stop now, it's going to cost us money, a lot of money. I think you're all aware of this, the cost escalation factor that's been built into some of the estimates that we've, that we've seen thus far. At this, at this point in time, I think it's five percent, that building costs are rising at a, at a rate of five percent. If we put off construction for another year, that's an additional five percent that goes into the estimate. But the other factor that isn't quite as apparent is something that Ben talked about, and that's the financing cost. We are in a stage right now where interest rates, borrowing rates are very, very favorable. We need to take advantage of that right now. I was frankly disappointed that we couldn't move forward with trying to fund this project now, while we have an opportunity to fund it at a very, very attractive rate. If we wait, and if rates don't maintain, a project of this size, whether it's ten million or fifteen million or seventeen and a half million dollars, is over thirty years, is going to cost the town more than, in excess of a million dollars, probably several millions of dollars in additional interest. That's a fact. So, time is of the essence. I get it, and I agree. We need to look at these estimates, figure out where we can do it better and less expensively, but we need to do it. We can't continue to put this off. Thank you.
I'm going to go here and then over there.
Hi, I'm Susan Gould Covielo, 6 Burnham Court. I want to thank the Select Board and the Board of the FinCom and the Town Building Committee for working through this. I think it's a great project, I think it's the right place. Like anybody else, I'd like to see the cost as low as possible, and I think we need to go forward with this as soon as possible. I do have a question, though, about the actual article that's on the table. The four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, it's coming out of the sale of real estate funds, as long as everybody understands, the sale of real estate funds are the funds that the town got from the sale of Canomo Point properties? And that money was put aside, I like to think of it as underneath Canomo Point, to hold up Canomo Point and to continue to hold up Canomo Point into the future, and continue to make betterments out there for the use of the entire town. My question for the FinCom is, what is the health of the Canomo Point funds, or the sale of real estate funds? How much is in there? How much will this deplete it? And what else are we looking at funding from that? But I'll keep my question specifically for this article and the five hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you for the question. Right now, the sale of real estate fund, the Canomo Point fund, is just under six million dollars. This article for the four hundred and ninety-seven thousand would be taken from that fund, so it would bring it down to just under five and a half million. One of the decisions in front of us, because the decision has not been made, and that is, how much to come out of the sale of real estate fund versus how much do we take on as debt? Obviously, we need to have a cost number, a cost number that is, you know, that is finalized, and we're not there yet to determine what that mix is going to be between cash and debt. And there's some other questions around, you know, how do we structure the debt in terms of term, and, you know, level payment versus level principal and whatnot, which we haven't, haven't gotten there yet. But that is the, that's the answer in terms of what's in the sale of real estate fund.
Thank you. Going to the back of the room?
Betsy Ridge Madsen, 22 Sogan East Road. I think we definitely need a fire station, it's important to do it now, but I think the budget is out of control. And I would like to make an amendment to the article that we have before us, to say that the authorized planning funds be used only to plan for a fire station-only facility with a budget not to exceed nine million dollars.
That's, I don't think we can do that. All we're doing is design money, not limiting the scope, limiting the amount we can spend.
But you can plant, you can put a limit, I think, on what you plan for. We need to have some parameters for saying to the architect and the project manager that we don't want to spend seventeen and a half, we'd like to spend ten, and I was going to say, nine for the fire station, and one to refurbish the police station, as in one million and nine million.
If you're going to try and amend that, I'll need that in writing before I go on. So, who's the amendment proposer? You can certainly amend how much you want to spend for the article for design. Putting that number of nine million is, could be advisory, but it's not something we can put in. You can advise them, but not put it in the motion to amend. And the rest of this, where it's looking to refurbish Martin Street, is definitely out of scope, because the article addresses a certain location already, so that's out of scope. But you can, you can certainly say to author, if you wanted to amend the amount of money spent on design, planning for the fire station-only facility is fine, but you can't really add in the nine million and the different location, that's out of scope.
How could I phrase it so that the architect and the planner, project planner, know that the town feels that this is too much money to spend?
Well, that's the opinion of some people in town, so that's, that would be an advisory.
No, that's why it's an amendment. People can vote yes or no to that.
But I can't put, the nine million, it would be advisory, it's not, you can't, you can't put in the motion, the nine, the dollar figure as that number. It would be advisory, but it is not part of the motion. They would, you'd advise them, the selectmen, not to spend over a certain amount of money, but it can't be in the motion.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, can we as a meeting make that advice? Can we get a sense of the meeting that that's what the people feel like, or they don't feel like that?
I believe we could probably get a sense of the meeting, yes, but it's not binding.
That's fine. I think we need to know, and the selectmen, and the project manager, and the architect need to know, that we don't have unlimited funds.
So, do you still want to do an amendment, the way it's written, without the location change and the nine million dollars? And then I'll have to ask Greg how we're going to word this part of it, so. Think about how you might want to do the amendment. us, and my questions are, what is the cost, not necessarily the cost, but the relative cost of renovating the existing station for police as opposed to replacing it for police? And then what are the relative costs of replacing the existing station for police and building for a fire alone on John Wise? I want the architects to clarify this again so that we're clear on where that stands. Before I ask them to come up, I want to comment that I understand Essex is a small town, but that doesn't mean that we buy little fire trucks and we don't have enough equipment. We have equipment that our fire department needs to respond to the emergencies in town. We have two ambulances. You don't want to hear when you call for an ambulance, oh, you're going to have to wait until it comes back. We have a certain level of care that we have to provide for the residents of the town. We have equipment that we have to house for that. We can't just nickel and dime these departments. They're the people who protect us, they're the people who take care of us, they have equipment and things that they need to come to take care of emergencies in town. You can't gauge public safety by square foot per person in town. There's a minimum level of services that you need to provide, and that's what we have. We're not fat with equipment, we have what we need. Same with police. Just because police work out of a trailer and two rooms in the existing station doesn't mean that that's sufficient for them to work. They need a new station, too. And putting fire and police together, there's a combined efficiency there. It saves us $2 million, but the architects can answer my question on that, too, over building separately. We cannot renovate the existing station and make it safe for police either. So I'm going to ask Stuart to come up and address those two conversations.
Just with leave of the meeting, I'm going to have this gentleman speak again. If everyone in favor of that, say aye. Sounds like everyone's good.
Okay, thank you. So as part of the study, we took a look at renovating the Martin Street building. I don't know how many of you have been in it, but it's in pretty sad shape. We sent a team of mechanical electricals, engineers, structural engineers to look at the building. Basically, their conclusions were the mechanical systems need to be completely replaced, the electrical systems need to be completely replaced, plumbing systems need to be completely replaced. If you've been in it, you know the finishes are completely shot every place in the building. There's no insulation in the building, right? So we need to insulate it. The windows probably need some attention and probably replacement. So if you look at what we're keeping, we would be keeping the block walls, probably gutting it back to that point. The problem with the block walls are, the building was built before there was a building code, and it's unreinforced block. As part of a renovation to that building, the building code, this would be a Level 3 renovation, it would require a structural review. Now, the building code has a higher structural standard for what they call essential services, fire stations, because if you have a hurricane, you have a huge snowstorm, you don't want your fire station or your police station to fall down or blow away. So there's a higher structural standard that's required. So it's likely, so for instance, the roof, which was, there was no building code when it was built, so we'd have to do an analysis, but the code would require a 20% boost on snow loading on the existing roof. So you're probably going to have to tear the roof off and rebuild at least the roof. So now we have the block walls. Well, they're unreinforced block walls, so there's no seismic reinforcing in them. So for that kind of a renovation, we'd have to do one of two things. We'd have to build a steel frame inside the existing block wall, right, to brace the building so in case of an earthquake, it wouldn't shake to pieces. Or the second option is you go through and you take the block walls and you put a steel mesh every place around the outside, you anchor that steel mesh to the walls, and then you come back and shot concrete on it to tie the whole thing together. Now, once we've done that, we still have uninsulated walls, so we have to build walls on the inside to insulate the block. So it seemed pretty clear to us that there was no economic advantage to trying to renovate the building because there's just no value in the existing structure. So our opinion is, if you wanted to stay on Martin Street, it would be cheaper to take it down and build a new building. The issue with that is, we think that is more expensive than a combined facility. And actually, early on, I think even at the last town meeting, we thought that maybe that was where we were still at, is having two buildings. But it's less expensive to do one building than to do two, right? It's always going to be the case. There's less site development costs, the general contractor has less costs working on one site, and we have the option to share facilities like training rooms and the physical training rooms. Instead of building two, we can have one. Plus, because of this, we have a situation where if we were to renovate the police station, we can't do that until we build the fire station because we have to get the fire out, and then we have to move the police out, probably temporarily to the fire station. So that means it pushes the construction of the police station off for another year. So if we have 5% escalation per year, and it works out to be a year, a year and a half, that's five or seven and a half percent more in construction costs overall. So when you totaled all that up, it was much less expensive to do a combined facility. In addition to all of that, you remember the site we have that falls off to the back? So we're able to take that fire, if we didn't do a police station, you'd basically have a fire station that looks pretty much like what it does on the upper level. But on that backside of the station where the grade drops off, we'll either have to structure it and build space there that would be unoccupied, or do 14 feet of structural fill to hold the slabs up. So there's a real economy to doing a combined facility versus doing two separate facilities.
Is this discussion about the amendment, not the main article?
Yes, Donburn, 22 County Road. Ms. Madson said that she wanted to give the selectmen and the town building committee and the FinCom a sense of how the people at this meeting felt. There's a big difference between changing the whole idea of this building and getting a sense of the meeting. And I don't feel that we really can vote for this amendment because no one knows about this. And we're trying to limit something that we have been working on. My husband has been on the committee for 10 years working on this. And when this first started, we were on this same piece of property, and it was going to be a lot less expensive. And here we are, 10 years later, and the reason it's more expensive is because of what is being, some people are saying here tonight, we need to slow down. The reason it's expensive is because that's what we've been doing for 10 years, and we need to get it done.
More discussion on the amendment. Is that amendment discussion back there? No. Back here? Right here. I'm working my way around.
Amendment? Oh, no. One. Oh, there you are. Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street, the Finance Committee. I would recommend that this amendment stick to the financials. Like we could, this amendment could say, okay, like we want to spend, you know, $490,000 to finish the plan, or $50,000, or $200,000, or $50 bucks, or whatever. But I'm very concerned about where we use this amendment to dictate the design, like I don't want a training room, don't do the police, all that kind of stuff, because I feel that it would actually negate the 30% of design work that has been done to date.
Any more discussion on the amendment? I'm trying to figure out, there's people standing, I want to know if there's any discussion on the amendment. Yes, go ahead.
I actually intended to, Ed Neal, 15 Western Ave. It was my intention to propose a similar amendment because on Facebook this week, somebody asked, you know, how much have we spent so far on studies? And you're asked for another half a million tonight, and I don't, nobody provided an answer of how much we've spent, but we've spent a lot, and I think it would be irresponsible not to pay some attention to the results of those reports. And in 2012, there was a Reinhard study that went comprehensively through the existing building, and there were proposals to build different facilities, one of which was a facility, you know, in the Memorial Park or an extension of the existing building. In as late as November of 2017, we had a different architect that did a similar analysis. If you went to the town's website, you could have seen the beautiful drawings of those renderings of a new combined facility where the existing building is, a new building in Memorial Park, and a renovated existing facility. And those prices were for, in the vicinity of $12 million for the complete renovation of the existing building and constructing a new one in Memorial Park. And there were other issues that were raised in those, in those studies that I find troubling when I look at what we're looking at today. One of the problems that the November of 17 study raised was, they said it was undesirable to have occupied spaces beneath an active apparatus bay because all concrete floors will eventually crack, and water from the engines and other contaminants will eventually work their way into the occupied spaces. The proposal that you saw tonight, if you put one on top of the other, you would see that the jail cells and the booking and all that stuff is proposed to be underneath the live bay. And what I know from that is, the floor to hold up those engines has to be a lot stronger than if it's just a slab on grade. And I haven't heard anybody address that that was a consideration, but it's worth it. As recently as February, when we came and voted to purchase the Brezner Hand property, we were told that it was going to be a slab on grade on John Wise Ave for the fire department, and the assumption was that we were going to renovate the existing building. And it was within two weeks of that, and Wesley Burnham stood up here and told us that it was going to be cheaper to buy the Brezner Hand property because we'd be able to configure that single-story building, it would be adequate for the fire department, we'd have nice approaches onto John Wise Ave. Within two weeks of that vote, we're reading in the newspaper that we can't use the existing building, it's got to be demolished. Well, none of those other engineering firms said that this building could not be saved. And also, I went to several of the building committee meetings, and Paul Francis, our future chief, said the police department would prefer a more visible central location where it was easier for them to be accessed. The counterproposal is for them to be underneath this building in the back of the fire station. Nobody, you know, other than the sign, you're not going to know that we have a police department. I think those things need consideration in addition to that we keep being told, we're doing this because it's the cheapest way. But when this number came out, I know even the members of the committee said, holy crap, you know? When I go to buy something, I know, when I go to the dealership, I'm not buying a Cadillac. So I can't set out all these things that I want and then expect to get them. I have to go by what I can afford, and I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I'm not in favor of the amendment as it stands.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, so I'll take a vote on the amendment to just limit this to the fire station. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor of the amendment, say no.
No.
Doesn't pass. We are back to the main motion. Go ahead, Dan.
Dan Dusset, the fire chief, John Wise Avenue. Just going back to some comments that were made a little bit earlier about a couple things. Parking is dictated by the size of the building, the square footage, according to the town bylaws. Plus, we do have 40 members on our department who could come in their personal vehicles at any time and do have to have a place to park, as well if there was a public event in that same space. I'll just give a little synopsis. People keep saying, why do we have so many vehicles? You don't have that many vehicles. We have seven vehicles in that station right now. They're about this far apart from each other, probably, because they're backed up, you know, so close. But just so you know what we do and how we do it, we have two ambulances, which is a self-supporting kind of fund that runs itself. We quite often use those two ambulances, so if our one ambulance is either out on maintenance or if there's a second call, we use that second ambulance. We also use that for water rescue. Obviously, we're a coastal community, we also have the lake. That ambulance is fully equipped with numerous water rescue suits and that type of stuff that we would use for ice rescue and water rescue. We have two engines, engines are the vehicles that pump water on your fire. One thing that's unique to Essex, we also have a tanker. That's because probably about a third of our town still doesn't have hydrants. So we do have that extra vehicle that other communities don't have, but that's why. So the people who live on Chode Street, some sections of Apple Street, Southern Avenue, Canomo Point, Pond Street, Wood Drive, beyond the hydrant lines, that's why we have that vehicle, and that's why we're kind of unique to everybody compared to some other communities. And then we have a forestry vehicle, which instead of taking a half a million dollar fire truck into the woods, we take a $100,000 vehicle into the woods. And then we also have a ladder truck. So that's kind of where we stand, why we have that many vehicles. Some of the other communities around us may have five or six, but they also have hydrants everywhere, so that makes a big difference. The other thing is, for the ISO ratings, we have to have a certain amount of water-flowing capability for your insurance rates to stay at a certain level. If not, they'll start creeping up. So you can compensate on one side and get rid of fire apparatus, but then your homeowner's insurance is going to go up. As far as backing them off the highway in Boston, in Boston, they have, you know, probably a controlled intersection, a lot slower traffic. That was a recipe for disaster, trying to back off a 133 into an apparatus bay. It's not an easy task just to drive these vehicles, let alone maneuver it through traffic that's doing 35, 45 miles an hour. So the other thing is, talk about meeting space. We train regularly, our guys train, so if we're in a meeting room, it doesn't make sense for us to be at the town hall when the trucks are on John Wise Avenue, so when a call comes in, now we have to go the other direction. We can't take our vehicles to the town hall. If there's a ballgame, something else going on, there's no space to park them. So those are just some of the misconceptions I've heard thrown out there. Again, I won't say we, maybe there was some people shocked. We knew it was going to cost money, that's why, at this point, Chairman O'Donnell said we need to step back and we need to regroup, and we need to have better numbers, because personally, coming in with just estimates to come here and try to sell it to you would have been a hard sell. So that's why we're stepping back, but we need this other money to continue moving forward. It's not going to get any cheaper, as you've heard. It's probably $600,000 a year, every construction cycle, we put it off, so it's going to add up. The block building we're in, you heard the professionals, if you want to look, there's blocks everywhere on the side of the building just blowing out because the...
at any time and do have to have a place to park, as well if there was a public event in that same space. I'll just give a little synopsis. People keep saying, why do we have so many vehicles? You don't have that many vehicles. We have seven vehicles in that station right now. They're about this far apart from each other, probably, because they're backed up, you know, so close. But just so you know what we do and how we do it. We have two ambulances, which is a self-supporting kind of fund that runs itself. We quite often use those two ambulances, so if our one ambulance is either out on maintenance, or if there's a second call, we use that second ambulance. We also use that for water rescue, obviously, we're a coastal community, we also have the lake. That, that ambulance is fully equipped with numerous water rescue suits and that type of stuff that we would use for ice rescue and water rescue. We have two, two engines. Engines are the vehicles that pump water on your fire. One thing that's unique to Essex, we also have a tanker. That's because probably about a third of our town still doesn't have hydrants. So we do have that extra vehicle that other communities don't have, but that's why. So the people who live on Chode Street, some sections of Apple Street, Southern Avenue, Canomo Point, Pond Street, Wood Drive, beyond the hydrant lines, that's why we have that vehicle, and that's why we're kind of unique to everybody compared to some other communities. And then we have a forestry vehicle, which, instead of taking a half a million dollar fire truck into the woods, we take a $100,000 vehicle into the woods. And then we also have a ladder truck. So that's kind of where we stand, why we have that many vehicles. Some of the other communities around us may have five or six, but they also have hydrants everywhere, so that makes a big difference. The other thing is, for the ISO ratings, we have to have a certain amount of water-flowing capability for your insurance rates to stay at a certain level. If not, they'll start creeping up. So you can compensate on one side and get rid of fire apparatus, but then your homeowner's insurance is going to go up. As far as backing them off the highway in Boston, in Boston, they have it, you know, probably a controlled intersection, a lot slower traffic. That was a recipe for disaster, trying to back off a 133 into an apparatus bay. If, it's, it's not an easy task just to drive these vehicles, let alone maneuver it through traffic that's doing 35, 45 miles an hour. So, the other thing is, talked about meeting space. We train regularly. Our guys train, so if we're in a meeting room, it doesn't make sense for us to be at the town hall when the trucks are on John Wise Ave, so when a call comes in, now we have to go the other direction. We can't take our vehicles to the town hall. There's a ballgame, something else going on, there's no space to park them. So, those are just some of the misconceptions I've heard thrown out there. Again, I won't say we, there was, maybe there was some people shocked. We knew it was going to cost money, that's why, at this point, Chairman O'Donnell said we need to step back and we need to regroup, and we need to have better numbers, because personally, coming in with just estimates to come here and try to sell it to you would have been a hard sell. So, that's why we're stepping back, but we need this other money to continue moving forward. It's not going to get any cheaper, as you've heard. It's probably $600,000 a year, every construction cycle, we put it off, so it's going to add up. The block building we're in, you heard the professionals, if you want to look, there's blocks everywhere on the side of the building just blowing out, because the integrity of the block is such that it's, it's not even weather-tight anymore. The roof has failed, there's no fire alarm system, no sprinkler system. The basic amenities and safety features are not in that building, so, and to do that, it's, it's an outrageous amount of money. By doing all these designs and putting these, some of these features together, like the training room, generators, we're not duplicating those costs when we build a facility, which we'd have to do individually if we had two buildings. And then, we'd have twice the cost of maintaining a building and running it after that, so. That's my piece.
Nick Royal, 6 Winter Brook Street. I'll try and make this quick. I thoroughly support having a combined building here. We owe our police and our firefighters a lot. The firefighters are volunteers, I think the police department are great compared with English police, they're a joy, I can assure you. I do have some concerns over the cost, though, and I, just today, I rang up several companies that build public safety buildings. One of them, General Steel, they're out of Denver, and I explained, you know, what we were facing here in town. And they told me that a 26,000-square-foot building, the maximum probably they're charged is $130 a square foot, which works out at about three, just under $3.4 million. Now, even taking that they've got that wildly wrong, and it's three times that amount, that's $10 million, just over a million dollars, not the $17 million that we're being quoted. The other interesting thing about these guys is that in fact, they combine the design in with the building, and they rebate that design bet, which is about $6,400. So I'm curious as to how the architects here can justify a half a million dollar fee that it looks like we're paying at the moment, when there are companies out there that can do it for considerably less. They'll even clad the building, they'll make it look just like a, a New England building. And, and the last thing is, that I noticed on the plans, that this building is not rectangular. If you don't have a rectangular building, the costs are skyrocket. I'm sure that with a little bit of redesign, that we could get a rectangular building that would look just as nice than the building that they, the architects seem to be proposing at the moment. And, and the last thing is, maybe we should put the build of this out to tender countrywide. We all know that the costs in, in New England, in the Northeast, are way, way higher than they are, you know, in other parts of the country, and even if they charge us a million bucks for shipping all the stuff over, it's still going to work out considerably cheaper than obviously building it using a, a New England contractor. To the end.
Dave Driscoll, Chairman of the Board of Health. I've heard a lot of really good arguments about the cost, and I want to address another concern. Being the chairman of the Board of Health, our concern is to ensure the good health and the public safety for all the citizens of Essex, and that includes our first responders. Right now, as of February 1st, 2019, there are new OSHA standards that have gone into effect, and Massachusetts has adopted those federal standards. And those standards are meant to address some of the health concerns that our firefighters and our other first responders face every day. And those concerns, for example, between 2016 and 2018, 24 cancer-related deaths directly related to fire depart, fire department activity has been recorded in Massachusetts. Part of these regulations are supposed to make it safer for our volunteer fire department. We've been kicking the can down the road a little too long, we've been too focused on trying to cut back some money here, cut back some money there, which I get that. I, I don't want my taxes to go up, but however, it comes to a point where you have to say, enough is enough, we need to look at the safety and the, and the health of our first responders, because we do depend on them. The Board of Health does support moving forward. I'm glad that the committee did decide to hold off on the 17.5, because that was a lot to take, but, and to be able to maybe thoughtfully think about moving forward, how to most economically address these concerns. I mean, after all, the, the Memorial Building was 1950, it's only 69 years old, I mean, why not redo it? Anyway, I encourage everybody to, to vote for moving the process forward, so that we can provide a safe and healthful environment for our first responders. Thank you.
Alden Blodgett, 10 Orchard Road. I'm just trying to understand the context for this figure, almost $500,000. I think we voted $660,000 already for planning, and I'm, I'm concerned about the project manager costs and, and how they all add up. The last public meeting I was at, the project manager costs were $2 million something. And, so I don't know if this is part of that $2 million that we're voting for today, I don't know if the $660,000 we already voted for was part of the 2-point-whatever million, but I'm just trying to understand, because I, I feel that when corporate world starts working with towns and governments, it's sort of like a wedding. You know, you go and, and all the prices get jacked up as soon as you say it's a wedding. As soon as you say it's town government, well, taxpayers will pay for it. So I, I'm just concerned about that figure. And the final thing I'll say is that I, I believe we need a new fire department, I believe we need a new police department, and I think enough is enough. But I also think the taxes in this town, enough is enough. And I would be a lot more impressed if, over the years, the taxes had been attacked in the operating budget, and the taxes had not gone up every, almost every year. One year they did not, but in four, in 2012, it was 14, 29, or 39, and now we're over 17. And it's just staggering to me that we keep thinking that we can continue every year raising taxes.
Stuart Pratt, 15 Tree Hill. Before I go into some comments on the overall project, and in answer to your question, the money that was voted to date did not include what we were asking for tonight. What we were asking for tonight was going to be part of the ultimate, whatever the number is, but what could have been 17 million. What we're asking for tonight, interestingly enough, is exactly what this town asked for a year ago, and that was total transparency in the process. For us to come back to this town meeting with a number which reflects value engineering, that means everyone here who's got a good idea can come to our building committees, meetings, and they can give their ideas, and we've had some very good ones come out of people who have taken the time to come to the meetings. One of the other comments tonight was concerning the safety of the people on the fire department and in the police. Well, it's more than just changes in OSHA regulations. The state of Massachusetts Legislature now has passed laws that we are now subject to fines if we don't move ahead. So not only is the cost of construction going up, and actually, I think it goes up more than 5%, but the cost of fines we are going to be levied against this will be part of what we're going to be dealing with. We are not saving money by not moving forward. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the process. It wasn't 10 years ago, it was 13 years ago, that this process to find a new public safety building started. We hired Reinhold, we paid him to do extensive work, not civil engineers. The first time we've had engineers look at the actual construction of the buildings and the feasibility of reusing them was done last fall. But Reinhold, back then, even complained and said he did not think reusing the existing building was the best option, and the option we ended up with was guess where? Where we are now. And if we had built back then, the cost probably would have been in the $9 to $10 million. And if you look at what construction and inflation has done, that equates to 17 million today. The next thing that needs explanation is that if we do not vote at town meeting to go forward with the override, it means that the time lag from when, hopefully, this next special town meeting votes for a project, and when we can then have another vote at a ballot box, will take more time, we will miss the building season and probably add another 7% to the project. This town made it clear last year that they wanted the police and fire to have a decent facility. Right now is not the time for us to start talking about ways to cut away for the safety, the air handling, and the future of this town. If we cut back now, the next generation is going to be faced with a crumbling building the same way we are now. This is time to vote this. If you're interested in seeing us do decent value engineering, show up at our meetings. I say go for this vote. Thank you.
Betsy McKean, 35 Lufkin Point. This is unnecessary now at this point, but I move the previous question.
Perfect. We're going to move to the main article, 15, to authorize the spending of $497,000 on design. So, all those in favor of Article 15, please say aye. And all those opposed, say no. Article passes. We're going to move to Article 13. You're up.
All right. Room's clearing out.
Could you be quiet, please, while you leave, if you're leaving?
I, Rachel Fitzgibbon, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,73,441 to fund the town's assessment from the Manchester Essex Regional School District, said sum to be calculated solely in accordance with the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the C. Massachusetts with respect to the formation of a regional school district. As most recently amended by invoking and approving the provision found in Paragraph 4 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B, allowing district members to reallocate the sum of their required local contributions to the district in accordance with the regional agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Couple comments.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for your continued support, and thank you all for your ongoing commitment and dedication to our schools. Manchester Essex Regional School District continues to be one of the top-performing districts in the Commonwealth. Just last week, U.S. News and World Report ranked Manchester Essex High School #10 in the list of the 10 best public high schools in the Commonwealth. The district, in collaboration with our partners, has remained an efficient and responsible steward of your investment. While delivering an excellent education to our students, we have maintained a very even assessment growth of roughly 3.4% per year over the last four years. The budget we present to you tonight shows a 3.2 year-over-year growth. As always, your school committee and MERSD community is profoundly grateful for your support and dedication to our schools. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 13, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article 16.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to transfer the following town-owned real estate property at Canomo Point. Zero Cogswell Road, Map 110, Lot 38, and zero Sumac Drive, Map 110, Lot 7, which are currently held for purposes of lease from the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners to the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners for general municipal purposes and purposes of conveyance, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen acting as the Canomo Point Commissioners to convey said parcels on such terms and for such consideration as the Board deems in the best interest of the town, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners to enter into all agreements and to execu- ex, sorry, long night. Execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient on behalf of the town to effect said conveyances.
Is there a second? Discussion?
In, in English? Sorry. This, this is asking the town to approve, this is two-thirds vote, to, to allow the Board of Selectmen to put to bid two properties in the southern Canomo Point area that we had previously held back from the other property that we sold on, on southern Canomo Point. The reason for this is that we had held these properties out with the hope of potentially providing parking for people who want to access northern Canomo Point. At this time, we've already provided a lot, or actually, there's three lots that have been converted into parking on northern Canomo Point, which is where people want to go anyway. So, these lots sort of remain unused, and it's unlikely that the town is going to ever need that parking. We also have additional parking along the edges of the roadway there, so the demand for parking hasn't been what we thought and put aside for. So, there was an online handout, these are the two properties in southern Canomo Point. One's on Cogswell Road. It's not a property that could ever be used for building or anything like that, it's a strip of land behind other parcels. To develop that one into parking, which it drops off the road about three feet, we'd have to build a retaining wall and put in all kinds of fill, and it doesn't seem feasible or reasonable to think that the town's going to spend that kind of money to provide parking out there. The other lot is further, it's actually the, the lot that's in front of the old poor farm house on, on Sumac. And, and that, again, that property is, it's just under an acre and, and could be sold. So, the point of this is that we're trying to take properties on Canomo Point that we don't see a foreseeable use for, and to, to sell them and make money, basically.
I, Edward Neal, move that the motion for Article 16 be amended by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the following. I move that the town transfer a certain parcels of town-owned land at Canomo Point, including zero Cogswell Road, Map 110, Lot 38, and zero Sumac Drive, Map 110, Lot 7, which are currently held for purposes of lease from the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners to the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners, and that said lots shall be retained by the town for the purpose of increasing the available parking at Canomo Point, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners to create simple gravel parking areas on said lots as funds to do so may become available.
Is there a second? Further discussion?
The town has created a, a park at Canomo Point, which in my view impedes access to the waterfront. They created a parking lot on another lot that was, that was, had a house on it that was torn down, and, that's adjacent to the park, well, it's about three lots away. And I don't know if the Selectmen have gone down to Canomo Point on a busy weekend, but you can go down there and there will be no one. No one in the park. But every single parking space in the new lots are full. Trailers are lined up all along Canomo Point Road in the area of Clammers Beach. We have an area up further by the Sumac Lane Lot that has, that, there's an area there marked non-resident parking. And if you go down there, you will find that the area that says non-resident parking is completely full, and people have lined up and parked illegally, and I assume that some of them probably were getting tickets for being residents of Gloucester trying to get to the flats off of Canomo Point, and they're lined up there. There is not enough parking at Canomo Point. They didn't create enough parking when they created the park, and this is an ongoing problem. The lots that are going to be proposed for sale here are unbuildable lots, you can't do new construction on a lot with a holding tank, and there's no sewage capacity in either of these places. And these lots don't need to be perfectly flat in order- And these lots don't need to be perfectly flat in order to park a boat trailer on it. But the one that's down on Cogswell Road is a short walk from Launching Ramp at Clammers Beach. And for us to sell that to one of the butters, because that's who will buy it, the only people that would have any interest in purchasing this property would be in a butter who doesn't want anybody else using that lot. It would be-- you know, the whole idea-- I was on the Canomo Point Planning Committee for 16 years, and the idea was to keep the waterfront for the town and then sell the lots that were unnecessary. Well, since they've re-leased basically the entire waterfront except for a couple of small lots, we really had done nothing significant to improve the situation for the uptown residents of Essex at Canomo Point. Please vote not to sell this land, to have it kept by the town, and they can-- over time, the DBW can push some gravel in there, and people can go buy a lawn, back their skiff down into the water at Canomo Point.
Sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
This discussion on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, Whitney Connolly, I live at Two Sumac Drive, so literally across the street from one of the properties that we're talking about. Cogswell Grant-- or Cogswell Road, one maybe would be great for parking. I just know the one across from me. It sounds like, from what we've been talking about here tonight, that the town could use some money. And so, that spot across the street, I don't really want a house across the street from me. I like that it's a nice lot. I can-- you know, my husband mows it. We can park our boat there. That's nice. But if someone could buy it and build a small house there, then town would get money for the land, money for building a house there, another taxpayer. So, yeah.
So, you're not in favor of the amendment?
I am in favor of the amendment. I don't think you can split them into two-- I mean, I'm not. Can we split it into two?
No, we're in the amendment part, where it stays with the town, not for lease or sale.
Yeah, for lease or sale.
So, no? Okay.
Yes.
So, you're okay with-- you're against the amendment?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
Paul Penore, 57 Grove Street. I completely agree with Ed. If you go down there on a nice day on the weekend, parking, it's packed. All the lots are filled, all the way back by Sumac on the open road there. Even on the weekdays, good day, it's packed. There are a lot of outer-towners who come in, want to use it. We're going to need more parking as more and more people want to gain access to the waterfront. The other possibility, another reason to keep it, is also because, you know, maybe in 10, 15 years, we'll want to charge people from out of town to park and then to use the Launching Ramp and so forth. A lot of towns do this already, and why forego that income? It's not going to probably be a whole lot, but it's something that we need to think about in the future for Canomo Point. The leases are up in 10 years. We need a plan. We don't have a plan. Again, I support what Ed was saying.
Discussion on the amendment?
I, Laura Donovan, 29 Lufkin Point Lane. I'm not in a butter, but I do know Zero Cogswell is a very wet lot, and if you can get money for that, we want a fire station. I don't know about the other ones, but I do know that I'm down at Canomo all the time, and there is 95% of the time, there's plenty of parking. On a Sunday, when it's 90 degrees and the greenheads aren't there, you might have trouble. But there's parking. To say that we need to not get the money for these lots because of parking seems a little silly, especially one where you're going to need to be towed out of it if you park in it, because it's wet. Doesn't do us any good.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment?
No.
We're going to use the cards for the first time tonight. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your card. So, what I'm asking for, if you are in favor of the amendment to Article 16, raise your card, so I can count it. I'm going to have to have someone count.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, just hold your cards up. If the towers can count, please, because it's a majority. I'm going to have the towers keep your cards up. We're still voting on if you approve the amendment to the article. While they're counting, I'm going to read the amendment. All those not in favor of amending Article 16, please raise your cards. I, Edward Neal, move that the motion for Article 16 be amended by deleting it in entirety and replacing it with the following. I move that the town transfer certain parcels of town-owned land at Canomo Point, including So, that's a majority vote. Zero Cogswell Road and Zero Sumac Drive, which are currently held for purposes of lease It fails? I can do the math on that one. for the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners, to the Board of Selectmen So, back to the main Article 16. acting as Canomo Point Commissioners, and that said lots shall be retained by the town Any other discussion on Article 16? for the purpose of increasing the available parking at Canomo Point, and to authorize Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 16, please say aye. the Board of Selectmen acting as Canomo Point Commissioners to create simple gravel parking
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. areas on said lots as funds do so may become available.
I, Susan Gould-Coviallo, move that the town vote, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, to adopt as the maximum gross receipts amount to qualify for a senior real estate tax deferral, the same maximum gross receipts amount to qualify for the senior circuit breaker tax credit as a non-head-of-household as may be amended from time to time by the Commissioner of Revenue in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 62, Section 6, Subsection K, which amount is currently $58,000.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Not from me. I'm sorry, I was asked to read this. I'm on the Council on Aging, and I don't really understand how to-- I understand it, but I can't really explain it. So, Mr. Moderator, the town administrator has agreed to sort of explain it for us.
Absolutely. Brendan?
So, this is an article that was proposed by-- first proposed by the Council on Aging, and it is just a mechanism by which somebody who would like to defer taxes and they meet the income requirements and the age requirements can do so. And under the current state law, there's a limitation on how much somebody could make or have in assets of $20,000. So, by raising the amount, the threshold, it allows more people in the community to avail themselves of this particular type of deferral. Now, none of that is mandatory. It just gives more people the ability to utilize it if they wish. If you do seek one of these deferrals and it's granted to you, you should do so with some caution, because once the deferral is granted, interest accrues against the unpaid tax at a rate of 8%. Nonetheless, some people need this type of planning tool when they're working with estate planning or to try to stay in their home or in the community, and the Council on Aging felt that it would be a good option to provide for people so they could consider it on their own.
Thank you, Brendan. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes. Article 18.
I, Peter Pippin, move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws to add a new section, 2-27, to be titled Town Clerk Fees as Set Forth in the Warrant.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
This is just to simply bring the fees up to what it actually costs a town clerk to provide those services and certificates. They've been out of date for some time, and this is reflecting that effort that she puts in.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Article 19. By the way, I think the Bruins are ahead 3-0.
I don't know. Nice.
I don't know about the Celtics.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to accept the provisions of MGL, Chapter 64 and Section 3, to impose a local sales tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at the rate of 3% of the total sale price received by the marijuana retailer as consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
This is a-- let me catch up to here. As of July 1, 2019, the temporary moratorium, it expires, and this is basically setting up a tax that if it does come to town, we're ready and have rules in place of what would happen. That's it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 18.
I, Scott DeWitt, move that Article 20 be indefinitely postponed.
All those in favor of postponing 20?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Article 21.
I, Scott DeWitt, move that the town vote to transfer from sewer enterprise free cash the sum of $100,000 to design, engineer, construct, and oversee repair, upgrade, improvement, and/or component replacement with regard to the air relief system of the municipal sewer system and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second?
After we experienced three sewer main breaks along Main Street within 18 months, the DEP mandated that the town hire an engineering firm to determine why we had these breaks. The engineers have evaluated the system and determined it is an air relief problem. The installation of these valves will resolve the air relief problem.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Article 22.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to transfer from the sale of real estate fund the sum of $537,300 to be used as a match for a state grant program for the design and construction of renovations and improvements to the Canomo Point seawall system or anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
To put a little background on this article, we have an opportunity to have 3/4 of the cost of construction funded by a state grant. This money represents 25% of the cost of construction for the repair of all the seawalls out at Canomo Point. This is a real opportunity to have the state match 3 to 1 for the money that we spend on this, and repair the seawalls has always been in our wayback plans for Canomo Point and looking at the different areas. In each different project, there was always seawall work incorporated into that. What that would have done is done the seawall work repairs piecemeal over time. What this does is repairs all the seawalls in one fell swoop, which has actually become essential, because in some of the storms this past-- not this past winter, but the winter before, they really took a hit. So, it's becoming critical now to sort of stabilize those areas, protect Canomo Point, and eventually, this, having had this work done ahead of time, when we go to develop future parks out there, this part of that work won't be in those park projects, because it'll already be done. So, this is-- it's essential to stabilize Canomo Point, and we're going to get a 3 to 1 match on it, and so I hope you support this.
Any other discussion on Article 22? All those in favor of Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 23.
I, Peter Pippin, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $84,000 for designing, permitting, and constructing pavement markings relative to on- and off-street parking and wayfinding signage in the downtown area or any incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Yes, so this is being recommended. There was a parking study done a couple of years ago, and this is to implement the low-hanging fruit of that particular study, to put parking and signage on 133 Main Street between Western Ave and Southern Ave and a little spur off onto Martin Street to better designate parking areas and improvements of crosswalks, signage for parking, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to put a little background context in this, in that originally, years ago, we had a long-term planning committee that morphed into a strategic planning committee, and the strategic planning committee is made up of members of many town committees, and they developed a strategic plan, and one of the points in that plan is to encourage economic development in town, because economic development brings tax dollars and revenue to town without overloading services. So, the strategic planning committee then went and formed an economic development committee, which has been looking into that and trying to understand ways when we can improve economic opportunities for businesses in town without changing the character of Essex. The parking study was one of the things that the strategic plan, the strategic planning committee had done, and that the economic development committee had acted on and is recommending. So, therefore, we're recommending this as just a step in our strategic plan and also trying to bolster the economic health of the town with the intent of improving tax revenues.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 23, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Passes. Article 24.
I, Richard Ross, move that we vote that the Bruins, with two minutes left in the game, score 3-0.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone want to amend that?
Any debate? Okay. I, Richard Ross, move that the town appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues or other available funds, all as specified on the Community Preservation Act Town Meeting Handout, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for open space, historic reserve, community housing reserve, budget reserve, administrative expenses, and specific projects.
Is there a second? Discussion? No discussion.
opportunities for businesses in town without changing the character of Essex. The parking study was one of the things that the strategic plan, the strategic planning committee had done, and that the economic development committee had acted on and is recommending. So, therefore, we're recommending this as just a step in our strategic plan, and also trying to bolster the economic health of the town with the intent of improving tax revenues.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Passes. Article twenty-four.
I, Richard Ross, move that we vote that the Bruins, of one with two minutes left in the game, score three-nothing.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Anyone want to amend that?
Any debate? Okay. I, Richard Ross, move that the town appropriate or reserve from fiscal year two thousand twenty, communicate, community preservation fund estimated annual revenues or other available funds, all as specified on the Community Preservation Act Town Meeting Handout, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for open space, historic reserve, community housing reserve, budget reserve, administrative expenses, and specific projects.
Is there a second? Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of Article twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Article twenty-five.
I, Allison Williard, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of fifteen thousand to be added to the following budget lines in the snow and ice budget for the remainder of fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Snow removal overtime, five thousand six hundred, snow removal contractors, two thousand four hundred, and snow removal expenses, seven thousand, and further, to transfer from free cash, the sum of five thousand eight hundred seventy-five to be added to the advertised Town Resources budget line.
Is there a second? Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of Article twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article twenty-six.
I, Guy Bradford, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of forty-five thousand dollars, and to transfer from the sewer enterprise free cash debt reserve the sum of twenty thousand dollars, for a total of sixty-five thousand dollars to be used to replenish the Finance Committee's reserve fund for the remainder of fiscal two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article twenty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Majority, unanimous. Article twenty-seven.
Okay. Mercifully, I, Benjamin Butrick, move that Article twenty-seven be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That wraps it up. I will take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of leaving?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.